Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jody, roll call, please.
Kushner.
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Approval of City Council minutes, motion to approve regular city council meetings dated August twenty five, two thousand and twenty five.
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Adoption of agenda?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Kushner?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Item five, proclamations, proclamation for water and wastewater treatment professionals week, September eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Water and wastewater treatment professional of week proclamation, September, two thousand and twenty five. Whereas water is one of our most valuable economic, environmental and recreational resources. Whereas abundant water supplies attract industry and investment and create jobs. And whereas proper transport, maintenance and treatment of water and wastewater facilities contributes to the health, safety, welfare and economic vitality of the city of Warrensburg and its citizens. And whereas water and wastewater treatment is a specialized skill set requiring specific licensing and training. And whereas the citizens of Warrensburg rely on water and wastewater professionals to design, construct, own, operate and maintain sustainable and resilient infrastructure. And whereas water and wastewater treatment professionals week is a unique opportunity for these professionals in the communities they serve to join together and recognize the vital role water and wastewater treatment professionals play in our daily lives. Now therefore be resolved, I Bruce C. Euler, Mayor of Warrensburg, along with the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim September eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, as water and wastewater treatment professionals week dated this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you.
Thanks, Karen. Presentation, item six, presentation of grant award by Hero Fund USA, Inc. Presentation of a grant award to the City of Warrensburg Fire Department by Daryl Smith, CEO, Hero Fund USA, Inc.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we introduce Daryl, I just want to give you a little background while he's here. In February this year, we, the Fire Department, applied for a grant to help fund the purchase of some additional thermal imaging cameras. We did have some, some money budgeted this year to do it, and then coming across this grant opportunity, we, we found it to be an opportunity to expand what, what we were needing to help accomplish that. After experiencing some cost savings and some other projects, we were able to, to meet the match and then buy an additional eleven cameras on top of the fourteen that the grant helped us purchase. So in total, with all of the thermal imaging projects this year, we'd had twenty nine thousand budgeted, we were able to spend thirty five with the grant, accomplish a lot more of our goal in equipping firefighters with this tool. So I, with us this evening, Daryl Smith, CEO of Hero Fund USA. I'll let him give you a little background of, of their organization and.
Present check.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Euler and esteemed members of the City Council, it is my pleasure and honor to be here tonight. I, for about five years in between two of my fundraising careers, I considered Warrensburg my home away from home during the day as the general manager of a little business called Happy Days Dream Cars. Unfortunately, we had to shut down due to some health issues on the part of the owner, John Meyer and his wife Helen, but I re-entered the fundraising field after thirty years with the Muscular Dystrophy Association and started Hero Fund USA. Our staff complement, half of us are here tonight, and my wife Terry is our office manager and the two of us run Hero Fund USA and have been doing so since the day after Christmas at the end of two thousand and sixteen. As of tonight, this is the one hundred and ninth request for funding new safety equipment for first responders that we have entertained and funded. Our mission is to help ensure to the greatest extent possible that first responders get to go home to their loved ones at the end of their shift, protecting us and our community, our friends, neighbors and family. And so everything we do falls into that realm, including the thermal imagers that Chief Jennings has passed around at the day this evening. It's a nifty little device and it's not a cheap little device, but it saves lives and it can save a first responder's life in a dire situation of low visibility and nighttime and smoke environment and things like that. So tonight, without further ado, we do want to do a formal presentation to Chief Jennings and anyone in the City Council. From Hero Fund USA, a check for seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars for toward the new thermal imager project. And so I've asked this young lady here if she would take a picture of, of us presenting the check if we may step forward. Okay.
Yes, some of the, some of the men and women that will actually use the equipment here, so.
Chief Jennings, Mayor Euler, City Council, thank you for letting us be part of your community again.
Well, thank you. We thank you and you and your staff. We just talked about your staff, so we.
I'll tell her that when I get home from dinner.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting, Daryl had mentioned, Daryl, you'd mentioned you'd been with MDA for how many years?
Thirty years.
Thirty years in fundraising, so decided to get out of that and then you and your wife talked yourselves into this, so we're glad you did. Thank you. Item six point two, presentation of the City of Warrensburg Safety and Risk Management Strategic Plan presented by Chief Jennings.
Good evening. Tonight, we wanted to bring forward a piece of work that we'll be implementing in our daily operation, but wanted to share a little bit of history about it and how we, we've kind of arrived where we are today. So the city has maintained a safety risk management program for quite a, you know, for many years now. It typically ran out of HR's office up until Greg McCullough retired, and then we kind of found ourselves in a temporary void. As I like to joke, I asked a few questions and then I ended up with the responsibility. Partially because I was asking questions, partially because the Fire Department was a, a large contributor to, to the work comp issue that we're experiencing. So that structure was there. We, we put the team back together, so a department represented from each department is part of the, the city's safety team. Allows us to have good conversation, get perspective from, from all of the different pieces of the city and everything that we do. So put that back together. Started working on some stuff. So in our first year, we really just took a comprehensive look at the program. Realized we didn't have great data to work off of, so we revised our reporting system, started bringing in better data, got a better picture of where our problems were, so kind of started to lay the path of where we needed to go. A year or two, the city has a safety manual that we give each employee when they, they come on. It's about oh, twenty pages or so, so you know it gets combed through very, very, you know, early in everyone's career. So we still provide that to them, but the team worked on establishing safety rules, so they ended up sixteen kind of hard fast rules that, that guide, if anything, get them to read a one-page document and, and, and let's follow these rules and you should fare out pretty good. So it's kind of year two. Year three, we started to build upon those rules. Each, each department member on the team is looking at the five to ten most hazardous processes that they do, starting to develop a little bit deeper dive in the, the job skills that, that take those. And then the, we, we were working on the strategic plan this year. So that process started March. Each team member started looking within their operations that's in the lens of strengths are a, a safety and risk management, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats in that process. They compiled that list. We came together about mid-year and started literally writing them on the walls on, on sticky notes and meshing those things that were similar across the departments. Ended up coming up with goals for the plan and then developed the strategies to achieve those goals over the next three years. So goal one is to develop a safety engaged workforce. It focuses on the behaviors, engagement, individual commitment to safety. The second goal is cultivate a resilient safety culture, so taking it kind of the next level of ingraining that safety operation in our day-to-day piece with who we have today and then who comes in the future. So that, that outlook on safety just becomes kind of the common thread of our operation. The third, invest in safe, modern, emission-aligned equipment. So a big chunk of that, you know, is before you later tonight in the, in the budget, but catching up on deferred maintenance equipment, things like that, that are needed to keep employees safe. One of the problems with having a very talented and creative workforce is no matter the condition of the equipment, we typically find a way to make it work, which isn't always the safest way to go about things. So this goal focuses on looking at that big picture piece, having a good inventory, having good maintenance schedules, working it into that comprehensive plan and improving our safety in, in that realm. Fourth goal, develop safety leaders through continuous learning and professional development. So this is, you know, capitalizing on what we have today, that institutional knowledge that exists, make sure it's passing on because the more, the longer that you're on the job, the more that you learn, you can, you can operate safer. So as we've seen a lot more new people enter the workforce, it's important to pass those things on and position them to, to do their jobs as safe as possible. So why did we do this? Like any strategic plan, let it serve as a guiding document in a lot of the decision-making throughout the, the city and what we do. Reduce injuries, lost time, the work comp expense. We want people to essentially, you know, be able to retire whole without bad backs and, you know, missing pieces. So important goal there. So you know, research demonstrates, you know, that safety culture improves morale retention. So that's another goal from it. Enjoyable retirement, the financial benefit that can come from it. And, you know, the work comp component is a, a big piece of it and, and how we perform there. So we, we have over the past three years started to see a decrease in the experience. That doesn't always translate into how they calculate what our premium is, but we have had some help in that field just because of the, the progress that we are demonstrating amongst other factors. So that is just one make metric that we can see how we're doing. But so that plan is, is there, no actions needed. It was just as, as we brought it up, I thought it would be good to share that kind of hidden gem of work that goes on in the background. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How long you been working on this plan then, the strategic plan?
We started the, the SWA analysis in March kind of independently, and then I think it was July that we did the big group work on, on laying everything out and then put it together to what you see today.
It's a great initiative and thanks to you and the other ten members on your safety team too for their input and time with it, so.
Yeah, I will pass that on and, and, and your, and the, the packet is the, the book and then the safety team's on there, so.
Definitely want to.
Put faces to names in the group that's working on it and I appreciate what they do. It's hard sometimes pulling them in from everything that they're doing during the middle of the day to meet a hard rule that it's a thirty-minute meeting and get them back out there. But appreciate the work that they do and, and their, their attention to us.
I would agree. I learned from a former boss a long time ago that it sounds cliche, but safety really is everybody's business. It's really everybody's job. And if you notice something, I mean, that's something I had to learn on the job is you notice something, don't assume it's, that's their job. They're supposed to take care of that and really is an opportunity to make sure everybody has their eye on ball. So thank you for that.
Mayor, if I may, this is, in my opinion, this is an example of something that easily gets put on the too hard pile or, or put off, and I appreciate Chief Jennings and the team's leadership on this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item seven point one, a public hearing to consider sewer rate changes or charges for the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, presented by Carolyn Tuwey, Finance Officer. Thank you.
Good evening, men, members of council. At tonight, you have an ordinance given before you to set the sewer charges for fiscal year twenty twenty six for and, and for this reason, you have a, this public hearing for the residents of the city to provide their thoughts and feedback. And a notice of this public hearing was given on August eighth of two thousand and twenty five, which was a month ago as required. So every five years, the city is required to do a seniority study to comply with the current bond governance that we have, and this was done in two thousand and twenty two through RAFTALIS. And they provided a model that we've been following since then. And for this year, the model recommends that we have a three percent inflationary rate increase, which will see base rate charges increase from by fifty cents to seventeen dollars and sixteen cents for residential customers and for the three percent increase goes through all commercial, commercial base rates and the residential and commercial volume charges. The ordinance for this, if adopted, will be in effect, will be in effect from October one, two thousand and twenty five. And based on our billing cycles, the first bills that will see this increase will be for zone one and the bills for this will be sent out on November thirteenth and those will be due on November twenty seventh. This timeline will allow us to include a note in the upcoming bills informing customers of the rate increase that's coming up. And that will allow two rounds of bills with the note, so all September bills and October bills will have the note notifying residents of this increase. And yeah. Any questions? And yeah.
I don't have questions. I was just happy to see that we didn't have to raise it any, anymore, given the given the current circumstances that we didn't, didn't need to do more than the three percent.
This is a public hearing. You have any comments? Anyone want to make any comments? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Thanks, Carolyn. Appreciate it. You want this?
Thank you. It's very cool. That was a public hearing.
Item eight point one, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty five for the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. It's the second reading of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, twenty six annual budget presented by Mike Scragg, City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, this is the second reading. It's the culmination of quite a bit of conversation and collaboration with you through strategic planning sessions is certainly the culmination of quite a bit of work on the side of Jessica Ventrelow and Kristen Dorman in particular. I, I, we can, wouldn't be here without their, their work and their patience with me putting this together. Since we spoke last, your last meeting, there aren't any substantive numeric or financial changes to the document. It is finalized in terms of formatting, did have some typos that, that remain to be resolved, so there'll be a couple of pages that will make some editorial changes and corrections, but this is really the document and the financial approach that we discussed previously. I know a, a couple of you had individual questions on line items and we corresponded about those, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or anything else of concern.
Someone asked me, Chris, I just want to double check about the Hawthorne fence. Someone asked about is that going to be able to be completed in this coming year? The, the fencing around the Hawthorne Park. I, I knew it was in here, but I wasn't sure how to answer their question, so I wanted to make sure I answered it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the project, which is we call Phase Two right now, is actually the design of the trail.
Yeah, yeah.
And we went ahead and put in that fencing up front because it was a donation through the Johnson-Kunning Christmas tree as well as Lowe's, so it was really nice to get that. So what happened then this next spring, we're going to be applying for the third phase, which is the construction phase. And right now the development of the design will be completed by December of this year, then we'll go out to bid and get the company who would be doing it. At that time, next year is when it will include the fence to go around the entire park in twenty six.
Okay. All right.
That's what the schedule is for right now. Of course, we have to get grant approval, but we feel fairly positive about that, so.
Okay. Very great. Thank you. Now I know what to.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Any comments, any other comments? We've been through this a lot, so we're.
We've spent a lot of days on it.
Okay, so we have.
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
No. Technically, it's a second reading. So motion to approve.
Motion to, motion to approve.
This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine point one, an ordinance established sewer base rate charges for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six budget for the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, presented by Carolyn Tuwey. Nope. Okay, we have an ordinance.
Motion to move to second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing sewer base rate charges for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six budget for the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine point two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a change order agreement with Advanced Asphalt Paving and Concrete LLC, adding additional mill and overlay work to the two thousand and twenty five street maintenance program of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, presented by Phil Adlich, interim public works director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. So hopefully you all noticed that advanced asphalt and paving and concrete have started last week. They did a bunch of milling more on the south end. And we, with all of Mike's amazing work done with the budget and him coming to Public Works saying, let's try and do a little bit more. He gave us the go-ahead. So with Mike's again skills in the Excel world, he put together a great list of the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index and the Missouri Department of Transportation counts for the streets. So he came up and discussed it with Public Works of what streets to cover. But once we did that, we figured out that we need a little bit more money for advanced paving to do the rest of the work. Another one was the bridge over railroad track there on McGuire. We'd really like to get that done. That one was added after our discussion about the other streets and we came up. I have a number that's a little bit different than what you all read the other day because it was a ten thousand difference, ten thousand dollars difference. So hopefully Jody sent you that out earlier.
It's updated in your packet.
Updated in your packet. So instead of the six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and five dollars, it's six thou, or six hundred and twenty-six thousand and five dollars. So but the contractor also commented when he was talking with Dave that if we did the trucking portion of removing the mill, that that would save us a few dollars there. I don't know how much he didn't say, but it will be a saving. So we're going to work with them on that as well to save. But we need to, we're presenting this for you guys to approve so that we can get more streets done throughout Warrensburg, make the place look make the roads look nice. There's a long list. It's attached and hopefully all looked it over. Major streets like Young, South McGuire, a lot of that is getting touched. Berkhart. There's a lot of good streets on there that through the PCI rating and the road count, it's gonna be nice. Any questions?
What does the milling, the, do you transport it to and is it ever reused?
We will usually, I believe this year we are taking the milling and the old East Plant is a place that we'll put it. We'll use it at. the old East plant is a place that we'll put it. We'll use it at the barn or, you know, Water Street. We'll put some there. We use a lot of it for Phil. We use a lot of it for roads, gravel roads or driveways, not really roads, but our driveways. Plants will use them for around the maintenance building, things like that. So I think this year we're taking, sometimes the contractors want it. Sometimes they don't. So if we can take it, usually it saves us money. So we usually take it over the old East plant or West plant.
I haven't seen the big trucks go in there. Thank you.
I think it's, it's a great initiative to be able to get more streets done and maybe you could explain real quick for everybody. The combination of the PCI plus the traffic and how you ended up with.
Sure. So um we, we had the pavement condition index from a few years back and it, it rates streets from uh unsatisfactory or failed to, I think the best rate we have is good. Um, and it, and it gives a point score. So even within those categories, there's a point rating. Uh, and then we also have um traffic counts from the Missouri Department of Transportation. Not all street segments, but I was very surprised how many street sec, segments are in that data. And so it wasn't too hard to turn a low PCI score and, you know, invert that into a high score. And then a traffic count, uh, a high score as well. So I just created a system that equally weighted those two criteria. And then zeroed in on the top fifty that came out of that rating. So uh, and that's in the master list that they even provided. I think it, it's kind of undeniable. Those are the main streets in town. Uh, and just in terms of traffic, let alone uh road condition. So then uh, we were able to look at what was already part of Rethink McGuire, but it'd already been repaired by either by the street department or a street maintenance. There were a couple of segments in there that we felt like we could do with our staff and our equipment. Um, and then there's another phase. I, I, I don't want to create uh false expectations, but you know, we're in that design phase for the next uh step with McGuire over fifty highway. So identified those road, road segments as something to be part of that project. And then that left a, a handful of, of streets, um, that was going to top fifty that weren't addressed otherwise. And then in talking with Public Works and then driving the streets, there were a few outside of that top fifty that, that seemed to make uh sense. And the example would be Holden from Young to North Street. That's high traffic in general and, and even more so with the Rethink McGuire project. I would note that College Street is probably in that same category, but we chose not to include that just because it's still getting construction traffic and detour traffic. That's uh probably a likely priority next year. So I think by the time we get Rethink McGuire done, we get the original twenty twenty five street uh maintenance program done. If you approve adding these streets to the program, which would be funded out of transportation fund balance that we've discussed previously. And then if we can get the twenty twenty six street program done early in the season rather than late on Memorial Day of next year, I think we can look back and see a lot of progress from our streets.
That's great. Yeah.
Good work. Thank you. Any other? Move to approve, uh, move, move to approve state ordinance second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a change order agreement with Advanced Asphalt Paving and Concrete LLC, adding additional mill and overlay work to the twenty twenty five street maintenance program in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item ten point one, uh discussion of options for an investment grade audit and solar installations presented by Peter Hinkle, Schneider Electric LLC. Thank you, Peter.
If I could, all a little bit of groundwork for Peter. Um, so an investment grade audit, which he can explain in a little bit more detail is something that, that kind of dovetails into some of the financial planning that we're trying to do. It's something, a concept that was introduced to you in strategic planning. And Peter Hinkle was with Schneider, which is a firm that, that does investment grade audits. Uh, and so as part of the retreat, he provided kind of an initial overview. Um, and as, as part of that conversation, we discussed solar possibilities, which created a sense of urgency based on the tax credits that might be available. So to their credit, I think the very next day they were out looking at um uh possibilities at the sewer plants and at the police department in particular. He now has quite a bit of detail. Um, because of that tax credit deadline, that, that creates a sense of urgency that is not typical for something that we would bring to you. Uh, so the intent tonight is for him to provide you an overview of all of that. Um, uh, answer any questions, allow you for discussion. And we chose not to make it an action item tonight. Just really give you the, the, the information in the background. And then see if you had any questions or requests of us. If you wanted to proceed at all, uh, we could then staff that through and turn around a quick turnaround time for you. So with that, I'll, Peter covered the details.
Thank you, Mike. And I've got uh he's hitting, but he's tall. Uh, I've got Kurt Awer. He's our solar specialist. So he's our, if you think that I'm smart, he's way smarter than I ever will be. Uh, but he'll be kind of talking to you some of the technical details on the solar piece, but I don't know if this works. I assume it does. Oh, perfect. So really the hope is by the end of this presentation, we're going to cover three main areas and kind of like what we did at the retreat. Stop me. Ask questions. I don't want this just to be Peter Hinkle talking for thirty, forty-five minutes, hour, however long they allow me to speak because I can fill here. Yeah, trust me, I have a feeling I would, but stop me, ask me questions. We're going through it. If you need me to dive into anything, please just let me know. But really hope that we have an opportunity to have a discussion around three main points. And the first is going to be the solar options. And why is it kind of moving quickly? Why is it, I think we need to kind of get direction and, and kind of make a decision on? I'll discuss that here in a moment. The investment grade audit, which you all heard, uh, some good detail on as far as why we think there's a good opportunity here from energy efficiency, um, operational improvements, as well as strategically looking at your capital assets and figuring out a strategy and a path forward uh with some of those larger, more expensive ticket items within your facilities and infrastructure. And then the, the third, which is labeled the fourth up there, is really just the procurement, how we're going about moving this process forward. And so when we go through this and, and kind of dive into that first piece, just a quick reminder, you know, why are we here? Um, you know, the, the big portion of what you see on the left is trying to align with what you've already stated are important goals within the city of Warrensburg. Uh, I've heard some of them tonight with the different programs and uh offerings that you all have put together, but that's a safety plan, uh, the, the hope and the, and the new and the, and the uh, the check that you received and, and donation. Uh, but you know, what Schneider is really trying to understand when we work with our clients is how does what we do align with what the, the bigger mission and vision is for your community and what you're trying to prosper and what you're trying to uh provide your citizens. And when you kind of look over on the left-hand side there, you know, addressing deferred maintenance is a big portion of what we're trying to accomplish today. Uh, as well as really looking at ways to do more with less. I know it's a simple concept. Uh, but when it comes to solar, it's not just looking at a ten-year outlook. It's what's the next thirty, forty years look like for our city? And what's the benefit of looking at that application, looking at those types of systems? Um, whether that's at the East and West Plant, at the uh, the police headquarters, different sites that we've actually put together some thoughts and around how we can actually go to tackle this uh for the city. So oh, one more slide before I get to the real stuff. You guys saw this last time. But just to give you kind of a quick overview, we act kind of as a design build contractor. So Schneider Electric comes in. We work with different partners, both on the subcontractor labor side, as well as the actual equipment vendors trying to provide us with solar painters, inverters, uh, different pieces of equipment, mechanical, lighting, whatever the scope may be. And then we act as that design build contractor working directly with our clients. So it's a co-authored solution where somebody like Phil is going to have a lot of input as well as Mike in terms of what types of solutions we go to pursue. And then we bring back, back to the council to say, hey, this is the value of what we're looking at. This is the investment that's needed. And over time, this will hopefully pay for fifty cents on the dollar, dollar for dollar, just kind of depends on the types of scopes that we choose. But then Schneider is responsible for all aspects of that delivery. So we come in and act as the engineer of record, meaning we'll stamp the drawings uh or our team will stamp the drawings. We actually do the installation, meaning we oversee and manage that entire project. And then as we get done with these different projects, whether that's a single phase or multiple phases, we have a team who actually sits and works with your staff to ensure that things are operating effectively as well as efficiently through a guarantee of savings on the backend. Uh, that lasts for anywhere between one to two years to as long as fifteen to twenty years, depending upon kind of the, the relationship with the communities and, and what value you see from that guarantee itself. So Mike mentioned a really good point. We came out here on the eighteenth and I'll be honest, I usually don't move this fast. So please understand we've done a lot of due diligence uh in a short amount of time uh working with our team. But we came here on the eighteenth and by the end of that week, we had already audited uh three separate sites specific to solar. If you remember part of that conversation and, and maybe a couple of days later, I got a call from Mike and Mike said, hey, you know what? We're really interested in understanding is how would solar work in our community? Understanding the ITC tax is going away as of December thirty first, or is vastly changing is maybe a better way to phrase it. How do we look at this and find a application and where does it make sense? And part of what we'd already seen is talking with the police chief as well as Phil is hey, at least at police headquarters, there was always this idea of having covered parking. So kind of a dual purpose type of a system. It's got covered parking for the, for the vehicles as well as energy efficiency and using those solar panels to then provide electricity back to the building. Uh, we also looked at the East and West Plant during that time. And we're bringing that really back to you in terms of kind of a a windy road to get to where we are today to present to city council with the hopes of looking at an approval before the end of this month. Um, and I'll talk about the ITC deadlines, but really what we need is to start ordering equipment so that we can go into what's called a hold harmless, meaning that we've purchased five percent and that it's actually onsite. Uh, I'll show you and talk through the schedule. We'll actually be way ahead of that before the December thirty first deadline this year. Uh, because after that is when things do start to change within the uh ITC tax benefits and how they're applied to your project. So kind of just to dive right into it. And I already kind of hit on this a little bit, but just so that you all can uh read my eye test, so to speak. Uh, I'll give you just kind of the highlights of it, but essentially as of December thirty first and the changes from the big beautiful bill, we are going to have to start uh implementing what's called the foreign entity of concern rules. I'll let you imagine who they're talking about, but we'll, we'll leave it in a public setting up to the uh the Google solus that are sitting out behind me to try to figure out what specific country they might not want this all coming from. Um, but as of December thirty first, we're going to have a little bit of a challenge because there's a lot of, of unknowns as far as how can you get this equipment? Where can it come from? Uh, when the vast majority of the suppliers come from overseas? And when we start to look at that deadline, part of the requirement is to have a certain percentage where the project already started. Uh, meaning that hold harmless piece of five percent. Uh, and so should we order or get equipment and kind of our, our deadline to be able to achieve all of this work by the end of this year is really about October first. Meaning we need about two or three weeks in advance of that to have time to go through contracts, finalize things with the city, finalize things with equipment vendors and subcontractors, and then physically present an invoice to order the actual equipment itself. So it's not wait till the thirtieth and make a decision just so we're all clear on timeframes. Uh, it's, we need to kind of move or, or kind of decide kind of if this is the right direction. And, and hopefully tonight, if we can answer any questions, please let me know. Uh, and we can get to a point where we can have more conversations or additional discussion. After that December thirty first deadline, it kind of becomes a little bit more challenging. Um, incorporating the, the rules and the regulations that are in place. Um, and there's a lot of unknowns and then essentially goes away uh by middle of twenty twenty six in terms of the actual benefit for government agencies to the ITC tax program or tax incentive program. And if you remember, that's up to or for you all be about thirty percent of the upfront cost associated with the project relating specifically to solar application. Then the next slide just gives you kind of a sense of what that looks visually. I'm a visual learner. I have a four-year-old and eight-year-old. That's all they seem to understand. So I've got to draw it out on a piece of paper, but this is an easy way, I think, for you to kind of see, hey, in July of fourth, when that big beautiful bill hit, we had a lot of unknowns. Since then, we've gotten a little bit more clarity uh as far as how the application, what the process will look like in terms of using the uh FEOC rules as well as the hold harmless rules to try to pull this in. Uh, but again, it kind of comes down to a deadline uh that's been created not of our own demise or our own uh abolition, but it really just because of the fact that the big beautiful bill started to make these changes in terms of how we can apply for and then receive the ITC tax credits for the city of Warrensburg. Any questions on the specific credits themselves? Thoughts? Concerns? Because I'm going to have my smarter half come up here, uh, if you will, and go through specific sites. And again, we looked at the police uh HQ as well as the East and West Plants for applications here. And I'll have him go through those and just pull me back up here in just a second.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Kurt Awer. I'm originally from Salisbury, Missouri. Been a solar designer since twenty thirteen, worked on over four thousand projects uh nationwide and over six hundred in the state of Missouri, both with public and private entities. As stated before, we jumped at the opportunity to move quickly and look at these sites. Thanks to Chief Andy and to Phil for, uh, Phil specifically drove me around for about two hours that day. So we were able to get a lot accomplished in a short amount of time. The reason why we selected the site that we did, uh, as you see, they're labeled in, in the blue areas. That actually is an overhead shot. That, that system will be fourteen and a half feet tall. Uh, it will be tilted to the south, generating KWH, generating power. Um, the dual purpose of that is to be able to park vehicles, both squad cars, slot vehicles, other vehicles underneath there. The reason why we settled on that fourteen point five feet, um, which is, which is a tall canopy. Uh, the reason why we settled on that is there is some new vehicles. It sounds like potentially coming to the police department. We wanted to be able to allocate for the equipment that is on top of those vehicles as well. Um, these are going to be steel canopies. These are going to be um permitted, engineered and stamped to maintain their height, snow weight calculations as well as wind uplift calculations, all of that going through the AH during permitting and engineering process. Personally have designed and installed uh over three hundred of these types of systems uh on public properties. Very common. Not only do they produce power like Pete, like Peter said, but they will also provide uh a very nice balance of covered parking, both in shaded and from weather. And, and in total, uh, I think there's fifteen total parking spots is what we've picked out that would actually be covered. Twelve on the longer end and approximately three in that shorter end there. Would love to do more as well, but um just due to the orientation of that parking lot, that larger uh retaining wall on the south side of that, where those trees are actually labeled there. You can see from the picture in the bottom right-hand side, uh, that retaining wall. We are a little bit prohibited on some additional spaces there. I do feel confident about the areas that uh are outlined in the blue panels that you see there. The total system side of that is eighty and a little bit of change, KW DC uh system size for that. Happy to answer any questions.
How many feet is that? What M, what is a KW?
Kilowatt hour.
KWH, that's a kilowatt hour. That's what you're purchasing from the utility. So uh, at Chief Andy's location here, this system is going to generate power that will be first dibs that the, that the facility will use instead of purchasing that power from the utility.
Okay. So it'll go to the police headquarters.
It'll be tied in directly to the, the main electrical panel and the transformer at the police headquarters. Yes. So any KWH that that system does generate will be used at that facility. If there is an opportunity for that system to generate more than the facility is using, uh, the utility will purchase that extra power back from you at a wholesale rate. It's called net metering and this is what, this system is designed to be within that net metering parameter of energy.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the lesson I've previously learned is the cost advantage is negating your consumption at a hundred percent value versus the, the pittance of net metering.
It, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to max out even the additional parking lots that are at the police station there. Any of that extra kilowatt hours that every piece can purchase from you is at a wholesale rate. Um, and it's not going to leave the nearest transformer and they're going to sell it to somebody else at a, at a retail rate. Um, so it's very specific on the sizes for this one. Wastewater is not, not so much just because of the amount of usage uh at those two, but this is a really nice sized system at the police department to help maximize uh day-to-day consumption and usage.
And what percentage approximately of total usage? Like their average usage? Should this be able to provide with our normal weather?
That's a great question. So how, how we come up with that number is we look at a couple of different, a couple of different metrics. Number one, we look at the utility usage that happens onsite. The second thing we look at is weather history. We go back twenty years. National Renewable Energy Lab provides us data that shows exactly how a sort of five hundred ninety watt solar panel will act in Warrensburg, uh, specifically in that latitude longitude of the parking lot. Um, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I believe it will be uh between thirty-five and forty percent.
Thank you.
And a lot of the rules and regulations of the net metering aren't defined by us or anyone else. It's, it's ever G who puts these in place. And so in terms of sizing, you'll notice that the next two are a little bit larger. They actually get the cap of what's allowed. Again, larger usage at a wastewater treatment plant or two wastewater treatment plants as compared, as compared to the police headquarters building. Uh, but still making a very good impact on full fills in terms of uh cost reduction, overall costing.
The other question I have has to do, you said it was, it's engineered, stamped, wind, resist, so, so um how much of a wind can it withstand? And also what kind of hail size? Along with wind can it withstand? And is this something that would be part of our insurance? So if we had wind damage, tornado damage, hail damage, would it be covered? But how much can it withstand?
Great question.
So you can answer the last one. That's yes, the other two are up to him.
Okay.
It'll be a part of your property insurance policy, I imagine, as it's all said and done. These will be engineered for the required wind uplift for the the A H J that oversees that through the permitting. That is typically in the state of Missouri between 110 and 140 mile per hour wind uplift. Wind travels differently laterally than it does up, but it will be able to withstand 140 mile per hour uplift and at 14 and a half foot tall. Solar panels nowadays, they're encased in copalmer, it looks like glass. It allows U V to pass through it bifacial, so not only through the top side, but even though those vehicles underneath it are reflecting sun back into the module, so it's absorbing from the bottom. Those copalmers nowadays from the manufacturer are built to withstand an inch and a half hail rating impacts. I've seen panels, if anybody's a golfer here, solar panels on golf courses, it's calm. That's a little bit higher philosophy than you would see in a in a traditional hailstorm, but we do live where we live. So certainly can't rule that out. That is part of the property insurance.
And one last question, unless I think of another one. It rained the other day here and because it's been, we've had a lot of haze, smoke. It was dirty rain. So how often do they have to be cleaned?
It's a great question. Typically in the Midwest, so part of that Enrobe report that I mentioned earlier, that tells the weather reports back to 15 to 20 year history, it'll also generate a recommended amount of cleanings. In this particular area, there is enough annual rainfall that cleanings are most often time negated, but we have included cleaning the modules once per year as part of the operations maintenance program.
So you can't run the car wash? What do you, how do you clean it?
It's actually a robot. It's pretty cool. Remote control, they'll put it on top. This is not something that you want to pressure wash. Maximum P S I is about 12, 14 P S I that comes out of the bottom of that R C power launcher. Please, chief, don't get anybody out there with power. But typically just ambient rainfall cleans those modules to a particular degree. Out at the wastewater, it may be a little bit different. These are going to be tilted to the south at about between four to six. We're waiting on final engineering angle, so the actual angle has moved tilted to the south. Out at wastewater facility, those are going to be tilted 25 degrees because they're on the ground. You get a little bit better production out of that tilt and a lot less soil can stick on top of those. So out at Phil's locations at both east and west are completely, completely surrounded by ag fields that get worked at minimum twice a year. There's a lot of soil in the air, but due to the tilt of those modules, less soil can accumulate as well as snow and other soilings.
So if I understood our conversation correctly, Peter, the construction of these is not 100% impervious. There's, there'll be gaps or there between panels?
It's a point 0417 inch between on the rack that you see here. The ground that will be a little bit different. So they're not considered watertight, but they are considered water proof. And there are also rain gaps and catches underneath there. So even in the spaces between those modules, again, less than a half of an inch, there are catches where the rain catch naturally fall away from the vehicles. In an area like this, and this was a great point brought up by Chief Andy when I was there that day, not only is this covering the parking lot or the actual parking spaces itself on that south side, but it's also covering that sidewalk. So any of that snow or anything that could accumulate in that area is going to fall into that rock retaining wall area, rock vegetation area, landscaping area instead of on the sidewalk and cause an opportunity for a slip.
Okay, so when the, when the ice or snow melts, it should be falling between and not onto the sidewalk?
Correct.
Or?
It'll fall all the way to the south into that landscaping. The opposite of that is the smaller rate on the north side. We're going to actually try to install those drip rails to go backwards. So even though they will be tilted to the south, which you need to collect sunshine, those drip rails are going to be tilted to the north, taking that back into that rock vegetation area as well.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if it snows, what's the, what happens? How much do, is there, do you have to remove it, the snow or what, what goes on?
We don't recommend removal of snow at any point in time. It will accumulate on the carports, especially with that south retaining wall. There's going to be a nice area there, especially if it if it's blowing from the south. It will accumulate on there, but two things happen. Those panels, even when they're not generating, they are inverting power. So they do maintain a little bit of heat, which helps in in the form of evading that sooner than later. But the second portion of that is all the production numbers that Peter provided, as well as the electrical savings, do account for how many times per year those panels are going to be completely covered by snow, completely covered by foggy rain or any other type of weather.
Now, let's see, when the temperature goes to, oh my God, degrees below zero, does that affect the quality of the performance?
Weirdly enough, this is an electrical component. Cold electronics work better than hot electronics.
Okay, thank you.
It's it's kind of interesting. These same module, if you were to install this in Tallahassee, Florida and Flint, Michigan, it would probably perform efficiency-wise better in Flint, Michigan than it would in Tallahassee, Florida.
Thank you.
Great question. And then the last point, just for this, because it will get a little repetitive on the next one, is just the warranty of these systems. There's a one-year warranty chip included in this 12-year manufacturer that is bumper to bumper on the modules themselves. 30 years production, so they guarantee the production. And that is a one-half of 1% degradation on the efficiency per year. So at year 30, those those modules should still be operating at 85% efficiency. If they are not, that is a manufacturer swap out. We will come remove those panels and replace those panels. That is not something that requires an annual inspection. 90% of that is done by these things right here, that tell us when and when that's appropriate to do. And then the inverse, so that's actually what's taking that DC power and converting that to AC power, which is what she's going to be using inside that building. Inverse traditionally come with 10-year warranties attached to them, and then the wrapping themselves will come with a minimum, because that does include civil, will come with a minimum of 20-year warranties.
And so there'll be a meter of some sort, whether it's something on some, an app on somebody's phone or some somewhere in the building that's keeping track of how things are going?
That's correct. All of these systems will include monitoring on several different levels. So number one, the easiest monitoring that you guys will probably see will be on the utility bills themselves. The utility will count the K W Hs that the system generates. Any of those excess, you'll see a credit on your bill for those. But this will also come with smart monitoring, as you can have on your phone, on your iPad's desktop. I actually encourage Phil, it's something that that's really, really cool. Put it on the atrium at City Hall. Any TVs that you may have showing John Q. Public, hey, yesterday, our east wastewater plant generated X amount of kilowatt hours and that saved you $105, whatever it may be, you know, at the end of the day. But that monitoring can be used to generate reports and send out reports daily, weekly, monthly, annually, whatever's appropriate. You did mention the meter. There will be an additional meter that is installed. It's bi-directional, so it's allowing power to go to the grid and from the grid. In the event of a power outage, ever G power outage, this system is not off-grid. It is tied to the system. Well, that means solar production would be stopped. That is a safety measure to protect the lineman for ever G from catching K W Hs or kilowatt downstream. Look at the east wastewater treatment plant. This is a 100 K W D C system, so a little bit larger than the police station. As Peter mentioned, this still does fit within the net metering parameters for ever G. That area that we selected may not be traditional for, if any of you are familiar with that area right there, that is quite a hill. But it's very close to the meter, very close to the transformer. And with today's racking technology, we can accomplish really good production even on hill territory. So this still will be tilted to the south as well as accomplishing that downhill slope of that. All the same warranties that are, that we spoke about for, but this will be a ground-mounted system. So this system will be fixed. It will not rotate throughout the day, no mechanical pieces that could fail, anything like that. This will be a fixed tilt system. Those steel pylons will be driven into the ground, still accomplishing that same 110 to 140 mile per hour required wind uplift. They will be tilted at 25 degrees, so much easier for soiling, snow and ice to slide off of. Same thing, they will be tied into the main distribution panel at the wastewater facility plant. Thanks to Phil for for taking us out there that day. We don't need to make any major infrastructure changes to what's already inside there. There's a lot of amperage that's available there. And like I said, this is a, this is a ground mount with the steel will be approximately six to eight feet driven into the ground for those modules.
And how far above ground will those panels be?
At the lowest point, they will be about two and a half feet.
Because we do get some flooding here.
Yes, yeah, correct. And that's, that was what a very intriguing part about the reason why we selected this particular site. Due to that slope that's being accomplished there, this will be grass after it's said and done. So that does help slow some of that down as well. But the reason that two and a half feet is appropriate there is to still allow vegetation and maintenance underneath. At the back of those, those will be about four or five inches tall, and they'll be about six foot eight, six foot seven on the back of the modules at their tallest point.
Thank you.
And between those rows, you see there's actually three different rows. It's about 12 and a half feet in between those rows. So very easy, as you can see, the stripes there are very easy for traditional commercial sized mower to fit in between there as well as a 12-foot battling mower can fit in between there.
Knowing my crew will play a bunch of road mill underneath them.
Get goats.
Last one, we're going to look at the west wastewater treatment facility. We selected that particular area there. There were a couple of other areas that could be advantageous, but due to the proximity to the meter and the amount of cabling and wire that would be required to tie back into there, it made the project not quite as cost-effective. The area that we did select there is still on the ground and still within a really good proximity to the main distribution panel there for tie-in. So a lot less wire and conduit need to be ran that far. Still 100 K W system, still ground mounted, two rows there opposed to three, and that's a pretty flat area. Again, Mr. Osborne brought up the question earlier about flooding. We are aware that there is some drainage that happens out there in that area, which is why we do keep those panels at two and a half feet above ground level at any point in time. All the actual electrical components too will be behind the modules tucked in underneath there. The main switchgear, things like that will still be inside protected from the elements, but still plenty of clearance for any type of water, mowers, maintenance, et cetera. Any questions that I can answer at this point in time?
So those are just longer to provide the same number of?
Same system sizes as what was at east? Yes, but we were able to accomplish that same system size with two rows opposed to three. And still maintaining, the A H J will have a length requirement for those rows. So we're going to maintain within those reasons for that.
Thank you.
So to kind of get into the details, now I'm going to need to get my portion open here because my eyes will not allow me to read that. I hope all of you can, if not, I apologize. But just kind of give you a quick breakdown. So working from from left to right, you've got the location size as well as just some general details there on the far left. We then go into the price for each individual. Going from top to bottom, you've got the carport over at P D. You then have the west plant and then the east plant, but you'll see those are very similar. Again, only a couple of small changes just based upon location as well as the the distance between the actual modules and the solar itself and the actual electrical panels that need to be connected. It's pretty much the only difference there. You did see that 30% tax credit, so that again comes from the I R A and looking at the the benefit there on the the next column over. Approximately 1.65 and approximately about $500,000 of that would be covered through the I T C tax credits. Then you see the annual savings, and then I've started to break that down for kind of different iterations. So you can see what that looks like over time and how it adds up. And I'm using about a 3% escalation here. So when you start to think about these panels and ever G's cost, that's on average, on probably a conservative side, closer to about 5%. We just had, I think it was a 13, 14%. Two years ago, we had about a 12%. 3% is probably a little bit conservative in this, but I'd rather be conservative than figure that they're going to go up for 10, 15% every year. We, none of us want that, let's all be honest. But then that gives you what that looks like over 15, 30, and then 40 years. And then on the far right, you'll see a column that we labeled just the city out of pocket. So that's the net cost, upfront cost for the array to be installed minus the I T C tax credits at each one of those sites. And then you see a few different notes underneath. Kind of the first thing that I'll mention is just kind of the the net benefit. You know, we talk a lot about finances, we talk a lot about cost. Obviously, we're using, at least in the P D side, this for an ancillary benefit of approximately 15 spaces to be covered. But there's also a sustainability benefit, greenhouse gas. Now, that's a big part of the kind of initiative here within the city. Just some some fun facts that I put up there was about 45 and a half homes that you can run for one year or, which I think is kind of cool, about 949,000 miles driven by a gasoline-powered vehicle over the life of this system. So just to give you a sense of of the the green aspect and sustainability aspect of the projects themselves. The only caveat that we have is there, there's some conversations and Mike brought this to my attention on late Friday. So I apologize for not adding a 25th column into your repertoire here. But depending on how you pay for it, I T C has rules for government agencies and how it's leveraged with tax-exempt lease financing and then using the I T C program, which is really a tax program that you can't really double dip. It just has a discount of approximately 15%. So you'll see that kind of listed there at the 25.5% cost reduction. There's a lot of numbers. Essentially, the net impact to you all would be about $74,000 and change delta between the 30% and that 25.5% as far as the upfront cost reduction. Any costs or any any questions? I'll pause there. I know there's just a few numbers, but pause there for any thoughts.
Peter, did you have a break-even point in time?
Yeah, so it was approximately, if I remember right, for the, never read that here. It's approximately 25 to 30 years for the headquarters, police headquarters, and approximately 20 to 25 years for the east-west. It was about 27 to 23 years, depending upon the type of financing that you use. And that again is impacted by whether or not you would debt finance or use cash and capital.
That's a good question.
And compared to the life, expected life of the system?
Yeah, so you're looking anywhere between about 30, 40 years. I mean, 30 years on the guarantee and expected life, it's equivalency on those panels from 40 years. So if you kind of look at that from left to right, between that 30 and 40-year timeframe, that's when you, 30 years or less, obviously you start to break even. But even that 30 to 40 years, that's where you start to really make your, make your hay, for lack of a better term. Any other questions on solar? You can always come back. Okay. So the next portion of the conversation is centered around the investment grade audit. You all remember, we we did a business case, so we kind of do an ancillary look at several different sites, trying to understand, hey, what's the challenge? What are you dealing with? What's the kind of operations within the city? Maybe remember this list, the green ones were the ones that were included in the business case. And then the additional ones are the ones that since that meeting, we've, we've kind of talked with Phil about, hey, where's your pain points? Where do you want us to look? We've added some buildings, removed some buildings, and kind of settled on these in terms of infrastructure. And so the goal of the investment grade audit is it's really threefold. I mentioned it kind of at the very beginning. It starts with energy efficiency. Where can we reduce and find different ways to become more efficient in how we're operating these buildings? Secondarily is operations. You know, I think we talked a lot at the the retreat about comfort levels and kind of uniforming across the entire city and making sure that operationally you all can, and really staff can do their jobs, but do so in a comfortable manner. And then the third is setting you up for kind of a longer-term capital outlay and capital plan. You know, part of, I think, what the council retreat was centered on was, hey, here's all the things that we need to start thinking about in terms of the investments that we need to make. And part of the I G A's process and really the end result will not only be a project and things you need to implement, but it'll also be setting you up for future years, the next five to 10 years. What do we really need to focus on? Where do we need to think about replacement? What systems are coming up next? And what are the next challenges that we have? A lot of the units that we saw even during the business case were like, well, they're 2017, they're 2015, they're not quite there. You don't need to spend the money just to replace them. And we'll point that out throughout the investment grid audit process and work with staff to identify what units are most critical, either based upon age or based upon cost to operate and maintain that maybe you've seen in the last few years. And you've seen these slides before, so I won't, I won't spend a whole lot of time on them. But this kind of just again reiterates some of the energy efficiency and operations that we saw within your current utility budgets. And the next one? The next one just highlights kind of what that looks like from the business case. Obviously, things have changed on the solar side. That was a singular system at that time, but gives you kind of an idea of what we're trying to accomplish in terms of identifying savings and being able to Gives you kind of an idea of what we're trying to accomplish in terms of identifying savings and being able to take that kind of operational capex expense or operational expense. And turn it into more of a capital expense in terms of an investment that you're making in your current infrastructure as well. So in terms of the process, really what what will happen and and if you were approved to move forward. We're gonna start with what we kind of refer to as a conceptual design. So we'll look at all the buildings that you just saw that list of, audit them, spend time in them. Um, usually it takes about a week or so for us to really get into the nitty gritty of every single building, see all the spaces, the controls, the mechanical rooms, so forth and so on. And then that conceptual process is we'll come back and say, hey, this is kind of a laundry list. These are all the things that we identified. These are the. Issues that we saw in this facility. These are the issues we saw in that facility. And let's have a discussion from a staff perspective about what that's gonna look like. Um, what are the biggest needs? What are the drivers behind replacement, upgrade, repair, so forth and so on? And then from that conceptual design, we'll take a lot of those systems and anything that falls out again kind of becomes a part of that long-term strategy and that long-term plan. And we do more of a detailed design, meaning we take the conceptual ideas of what the solution might be. Finalize those drawings, go out to bid, go through that kind of initial construction, constructability walkthroughs with our team and determine, okay, how are we gonna take? You know, it might be a simple rooftop unit replacement, but it also might be a very complex full system overhaul depending upon the site. And how are we gonna make that happen in terms of a construction perspective? And then we'll actually help you to implement and really the goal of the IGA and the investment grade audit. Is to bring back an actual construction contract that we can then implement the work with a set amount of guaranteed savings. Uh, set amount of operational parameters and so forth and so on in terms of the contract. Um, that we're able to then help you to achieve those goals as a part of that larger mission within the city. Usually that takes about three to six months. So our thought process is, at least with the solar. I know that we did that really quickly from a three to six months and the other stuff, but uh this will be a little bit a a slower pace. We can all take a somewhat of a breath, uh hopefully. Um, and go through the IGA process to help identify and then come up with solutions. And a lot of that will be working mainly with staff. And then as we get through that conceptual and then that detailed, we'd want to come back, share some of those findings with council. Um, and then as obviously we go from a detail to a construction contract, come back once more uh and kind of share that out and give some options as far as the direction. And not only will we look at this from a phys- physical facilities perspective, we're also gonna try to identify different ways to fund the project. So. Whether that's using debt service, whether it's using capital instruments, um, looking at incentives. I wish you all were were Kansas. We just had a a big historical tax benefit boost uh that happened in July. Um, that anybody who owns a historical building is silly not to make the investment before that goes away, but. Uh, Missouri does not allow that. Uh, so if we can call our congressman, we can maybe make a change, but. Um, it is one of those opportunities that we're gonna look under every rock to find any kind of grants, incentives, or rebates. There's some state programs that we could even look at in terms of both the audit side as well as the implementation side for a low interest loan program. Uh, but we have a lot of different mechanisms that depending upon scope, they might fit into and it will help you to kind of evaluate uh and figure out what the best opportunity is for the city of Pittsburgh. Oh, any questions on the audit itself? IGA process? That was kind of a repeat. I know you guys heard from me two weeks ago, three weeks ago, so. So the last piece is just the procurement side. So uh, we use Omnia partners. In fact, you all use Omnia partners as well. You've got about seven different contracts that you use their services for. Basically, it's a cooperative purchasing network. Uh, it allows us to use and be vetted through the Omnia program for the services that we provide. From design, build, energy efficiency, ESCO, kind of whatever you want to call us, uh, related services. Um, but we would be able to then be selected, move into the IGA as well as the solar component from a construction perspective. Um, through the Omnia partnership uh through the Omnia program. You'll see that the R two-two-on-five-oh-four, uh, if my eye test works well. Um, that's the contract that we currently have with Omnia. And if anybody needs any additional information, we can send you the link and you can look through. Um, I believe I provided Mike previously also the qualifications that we went through with Omnia to be selected by them as well. Um, in terms of kind of the next steps, I know it's a lot to take in. Uh, there's really three, three things that we need to have happen to proceed. The first is agreeing to the Omnia partnership and being able to use that to move forward. The second is the investment grade audit, uh, which kind of dovetails underneath that partnership that allows us to start the audit. And then the third is direction on the solar component. Um, we have about a week or two, I would say at most, to kind of make a direction or decision before we start to lose uh our opportunity to go after the ITC funds. Guys, I know that's a lot of time. I don't want to feel like a used car salesman trying to get you up here to make a decision. Take the time that you need. I just want to give you the the facts of. If it's if it's two or three weeks out or it's September thirtieth, then you call and say, no, we really want to do that. I will have to respectfully say, I think it's gonna be impossible and I don't want to put you in a situation where where you might not be able to receive those. And so. We're really trying our best to try to give in a short amount of time as good of information as we can. And Kurt, I think, did a great job of explaining how the solar program works and how our. Um, the opportunity, if you will, to leverage those those tax benefits um is starting to get away from us uh just with the schedules and the time. So. But with that, Mike, kind of open it back up and any questions that the council has?
So I certainly appreciate Snyder's responsiveness and I know there was uh interest in. And the need for due diligence as it relates to solar. I don't want to present to you or cause you to think that. I mean, that's an uh imminent decision you have to make, but it was data that you needed now to make an informed decision. You know, the the break even period, I think, is an important consideration, just uh how long it takes to get to the break even uh number. And and the other thing I would tell you is. As Peter mentioned, um, given those those costs, that's not something that uh the solid way, or the, I'm sorry, the um. Surer fund has a cash capacity, so you, we would be looking at. Uh, financing that in some way over over that time period. So then that impacts the tax credits as well. But. With that, um, I think the easiest part for me is recommending an investment grade audit. It definitely adds value in terms of inventory planning and then moving forward with efficiencies and and uh those services. Solar, I'm gonna have to kick back into your court and what you talk about in terms of whether they're. But from a, you know, social aspect or financial aspect, how you feel about that. But any direction you can provide us tonight, staff then. Would proceed accordingly and try to stay on schedule as much as possible.
Any comments?
Thinking wow.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
It just means it's a, it's a lot.
It is a lot of information.
Right, uh, a lot to think about, lots to try and decide. In a short amount of time, whether it's just on the solar or if it's on both solar and the audit.
Could we say that we certainly want to move forward on the audit?
I I certainly do.
I believe so.
Yes, yes, I feel good.
And something to point out on the solar, we kind of broke that out on from a pricing. Those, you want to do one, two, three, add fourth, my fourth might be a challenge. Uh, one, two, or three, you guys can make that decision as well. So I mean, one of the things that we talked about last week was. The impact of uh the enterprise fund, maybe not having the cash available as compared to the general fund. Uh, and then the benefit from a covered parking perspective, those fifteen or so spaces, I think. We figured out it was around, you know, out of pocket capital, ten or fifteen thousand dollars of space to have those covered parking through the solar canopy. So it's kind of that dual purpose, at least at PD. Uh, where the energy efficiency is really the only thing driving over at the water wastewater, the east and west plants.
Was, is any of this in our budget? Is uh, is it under identified and unfunded?
Uh, no.
It's nowhere.
Yeah, this is so timely that this is all kind of late breaking. Um. And my initial thinking was, you know, when if you, if we could get ourselves to that break even point. And then whoever's in our seats at that time will thank us for that hundred percent savings then. But it's as Peter said, twenty-seven, thirty years out there.
I like the idea of the solar. Having the solar.
Covered parking?
All of it.
But you're, we could take the five percent. You need five percent this year um for the whole harmless.
Yeah, so so from a scheduling perspective, and Kurt, you can correct me if I'm way off the reservation. Essentially, let's say we had a contract by mid-September, we'd be able to order equipment before the end of September and that would cover your five percent. Um, but we could actually have the majority of this installed before the end of this year. Terms of the racking and the different equipment and the different sites. Um, now it will bleed over into January-ish uh of of next year just because of construction and. You know, there's obviously perfect weather that we're also banking that schedule on. So there'll be small changes here or there. Uh, but yeah, by 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 January, February, the system would be completely installed.
So it's completely understandable. This is a lot of information on a short timeline. If, so I I think question number one in my mind is whether you want to entertain solar. And discuss it further. And if so, how we could be helpful to facilitate your deliberations?
With the with the solar, if we install solar uh at the. So treatment plants, cost. Uh, the enterprise fund has to be passed on. To the consumers, is that correct?
It it'd have to be paid for on on, yes.
It would have to be paid out of that fund. So that gets passed on to the consumers.
Right.
And would that be, how is that going to affect what we're thinking? We're gonna be doing two percent increases for the next few years for um.
Yeah.
That's a million, it was a million something, right?
Right. So I I think that could be absorbed within the budget. Uh, we'd have to run those numbers. Over the timeframe that we think it could be financed. So I I will. I'm not envisioning this as cause for a rate increase. Uh, just a question of whether we can build it into the existing budget. And then. Ride it out till the payback period, no, in the future.
Well, right, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, but riding it out to the payback period is twenty to thirty years.
Yeah, thirty to thirty.
I probably, you know, I don't know how many more summers I have.
Yeah.
Um, but and that's based on three percent and we're seeing double digits, I think, is what we're gonna see. I know you're being conservative, which I appreciate, but I think we're looking at. Double digits uh going forward.
Increases.
Increases.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And again, can you refresh my memory of, we don't, the IDs, ITC, if we don't get those, what do we lose? How much is that?
Approximately thirty percent. It was a. About five hundred thousand dollars across the entirety of the project. PD was two oh five and the other two were about one forty-five apiece.
The other question I has have is if we are. We're basically tax exempt. How do you get a tax credit if it's a tax exempt?
Uh, that's how the, so the IRA when they came out with the.
Who's IRA?
Um, that, yeah, I I knew I should stop with my. Thank you. Uh, that was the one, gosh, about four years ago, that was under the Biden administration. And then the big beautiful bill, the BBB, uh, that was the one that was recently passed in in January. And a lot of the work from the Inflation Reduction Act, which was the uh the tax credits, uh, the ITC tax credits. I know. It's a uh three-letter word salad here. Um, those were from the Inflation Reduction Act three or four years ago. Um, those have now, and that's what's been stripped through that big beautiful bill, uh, those incentives. Essentially, what it did was it allowed government agencies to take advantage of what the private sector has always been able to take advantage of in terms of tax credits and rebates. Uh, but unfortunately, you weren't a taxing entity. And how that works is once it's operational. You then actually make an application, apply. We're doing this right now in the city of Salina. Um, as soon as their system became operational, we applied for the thirty percent on the upfront cost. And then at that next tax cycle, so that next April, those funds then are delivered to those communities and to those uh those cities, those entities who are involved.
The thirty percent.
The thirty percent.
The technical term for it in the Inflation Reduction Act is called direct pay. That is what non-taxable expenses qualify for. It is underneath the ITC investment tax credit, but it is called the direct pay.
Correct.
Okay.
So for what it's worth, uh, a million dollars financed over fifteen years is approximately ninety-two thousand dollars a year. So we.
Oh, thank you.
If we were to do that, we'd have to build that into the budget.
That doesn't seem as awful. As a million something.
Right.
I'm an advocate of moving forwards.
I'm thinking that too. Um. You're the numbers person, and so are you, of course. We've got really good number people on staff. That can put the brakes on this if it um.
Well, I I was hopeful for a, an earlier pay, break even point so that somewhere out in the future, we. You know, have more financial benefit to show for it. But having said that, I'd. I don't know what to expect in terms of average rate increases and what what that does to the model.
Well, I think that the energy increases are going to be considerable, the more data centers that they put in that are sucking up all the. Uh, energy, uh, electricity, and then the water. And they're not building new power plants that that has, that cost has to go to somebody. That's gonna come to the consumer.
Great example that I may just jump in is the Joplin area. Utility provider down there, uh, over the last fifteen years has maintained a three to five percent escalation rate on their utility power. Uh, as of this year, uh, they imposed a thirty-one percent uh utility increase on both their residential and their commercials.
What happened that they needed that thirty-one percent?
A lot of, a lot of things I will comment on.
In a public setting.
Well, every, every's already announced a thirteen percent.
That's correct.
And that may increase even more over. I can't remember what storm recovery they're gonna tack on. There's another one that they're asking for, so.
I I think the scariest thing for us is Evergy has bought West Star on the Kansas side, and they're now big enough that they're attractive to people outside of the Midwest. Um, and we're, we're a low power cost, you know, state historically. Uh, but if you look at it. We're still going up and and going up at a higher clip than a lot of, a lot of the other parts of the country, strictly because I think they see that as an opportunity. And when they do get bought out, that's my biggest fear as a customer.
Well, I anticipate when they get bought out, rates are real stupid. Because they can't.
Yeah.
So if the rates are going to be higher, like we guess they actually will be, how would that? Different, how would that affect sort of our.
Yeah, I was gonna, I would ask Mike if that's, did we do one at ten percent just to see?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly run some numbers. We didn't, we didn't do one for today's exercise, but. Yeah, I I think that anything that we would do, we can provide that over to Mike and give him a couple of different, hey, at five percent, ten percent.
Three, five, ten, twelve.
Just to be clear, whatever percentage we use for that model is the average annual increase. So if we see a thirteen and a zero and a. Two, that averages out to five.
Right. But I think three's really low, especially if they're packaging themselves up for sale uh in the future, which is what they seem to be doing right now.
And if you're able to monitor any of the public utility commission cycles that utilities have to, have to follow uh when doing and and asking for rate increases. Um, it's very cyclical, but usually by about the time that rating increase gets approved by the Public Utility Commission, there's already a number file, uh, which is the case for energy in the last three years.
I'm thinking it could be almost half the time if we use some. Yeah, estimated numbers of what really could happen.
I think the the uh, the last point I'll leave for our conversation, whether it's five or whether it's fifteen, this is the long-term hedge against that.
Sure.
Yeah, in in the form of renewable energy.
Yeah, that's the piece that makes logical sense to me and. Yeah, so I I would say it sounds, I mean, I know we've already discussed a lot, but I think, yes, we do. Want another short meeting to further discuss the other option, the other potential rate increases and to make a decision. So. So is that sound good? Cause we, we do want a little bit more information. We don't want to wait until the next city council meeting, right? So.
So if I, if I want to clarify what you, what it is you want, some modeling of other assumptions about rate increases. Uh, lease purchase cost uh scenarios and then the impacts on the tax credits, just kind of. Crystallizing this a little bit for what, uh, a little bit more. And then I guess while I have the floor, not to put you on the hot seat, but. This is probably an example of a discretionary decision at your level, more than just kind of a straightforward. A plus B equals C recommendation from staff.
I think we're at the. I think we are all leaning towards very much wanting to do this.
Yes.
But because of the wow factor, we're hesitating because of that, even though we want, we would like to be able to. Jump in with both feet and move forward with this. We just feel. We just need a little bit more if we could have that like really quick.
Tomorrow morning.
Chalk, chalk.
I think the, the nice part is it's really not hard to change an Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
It's real.
I I think Peter can back me up on this, but he asked me, how do you think this conversation is gonna go? I think, can, I said, conceptually, they're good, they're all about solar, but when they see the numbers, that's where.
Yeah. I'll put out personal experience, but the wow factor is there. We had solar installed on our house. To be honest, the number was scary when that we got told what it was gonna be and all, but our systems averaging. Generating an average of thirty-two to forty kilowatt hours per day. And we've seen four negative bills so far.
And we've seen four negative bills so far and in the last six months. And this must bill just came yesterday and with, as hot as it was, plus I was doing some welding downstairs for a while, um our bill is forty or eighty-one dollars. And today, in the, as hazy as it was today, I just looked at mine while we're doing it, it created over thirty kilowatt hours. And with the thirteen percent increase, what I figured out is gonna be is we're gonna start hammering into the negatives quite regularly at that amount of money. Does that sound logical with? Yeah, and I got tax credit last year, um and it got half of the last year, cause that's the way they do, and half of it this year. And that took twenty-five, twenty-eight percent off of the uh investment, so, which sounds a lot like this. Yeah, the wow factor is there, cause when you sit there and look at that number and go I could be dead before this system is is done. When you factor it all together, it makes a whole lot of sense in the savings per year. Granted, you're not gonna break even till, I think mine, my estimate is around eighteen to twenty years, but um at thirteen percent a year, it's not gonna take, it's gonna take a lot less time as things go on, and like Mike was saying, or was saying here. Evergy should say it. After you, he talked to us last time, I've done some looking and they're, they're for sale. There are investors looking into uh calling armor to buy them, and it's gonna double. Compared to rates uh on other places, like you said, what, thirty-two percent in Joplin? And that's just a tip of the iceberg.
Well, I'm an advocate of us moving forward with that. Am I, is there consensus among us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, move forward.
Unless you see something that looks, Mike, so stupidly out or
No, I I think you're fully informed and and I can't thank Schneider enough for expediting the due diligence and
It is amazing. I gotta thank you guys. I know you're busy.
Yeah.
I don't know how many people know about Schneider, but you're not a little company. I mean, what's the size of your company today?
Uh what about a forty billion dollar a year company?
Yeah, and to jump on this for Orangeburg, we appreciate it.
One other thing that didn't get brought up on the P D's project is the uh savings and ultraviolet damage to the police cars. Um hailstorm damage to the police cars. Um the ultraviolet stuff is just horrible on them. I've known them for years and years. That's why we park fire trucks inside instead of outside. It'll tear them up.
Some of the last benefits that we haven't talked about too is, it's a great visual representation to the public. You know, there is cost saving associated, there's tax credits associated with this, there's long-term hedges associated with this. This is also a great visual representation and aesthetic. It will look really, really cool when it's done. For John Q. Public to to look at, and part of our service is you're gonna be able to demonstrate this to the public in whatever capacity.
Yeah, we're all aware of the fact that we wanna do what's right and not be second-guessed by residents in the future if we decide to go forward with this, so we just had some backup numbers. You give us worst case, I think. Best case, we kinda need that middle ground where we really think it's gonna go and
And I think a good talking point is, it is a hedge against rate increases. You may not know what the rate increases are, but it's a hedge.
Absolutely, they're not going down.
Well, we will work on that, get that to you um early tomorrow.
We appreciate, Peter and I started talking last fall, and then Danielle left us, and then we thought, well, we'll have city manager by January, and then it was February, and then appreciate the
You made a good choice. I knew Mike before, uh just circumstance that he that he got the job, but uh we've worked together in Salina, and I was gonna say, we we did for our solar project out there with them. A big ribbon cutting and uh flipped a switch and uh kind of had a point appreciation day as a part of it, so would love to do something here as well, and we'll get your information, we'll be uh, we'll be right back to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Peter Kurt. Thank you also.
Thank you so much.
Item ten point two, solid waste rate discussion presented by Barbara Carroll, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh we're here for our first ever annual solid waste review, a rate discussion. One year ago tomorrow, you entered into your contract with Constable, so we have that anniversary coming up.
Celebrate.
Celebration coming up.
We need to celebrate.
So we established our rates last year in December after we had the final contract rate from Constable. And your current rate is comprised of a twenties, for the base service is comprised of a twenty-six dollar and fifty-six cents for a fee from Constable sanitation per unit. And then a four dollar and forty cent administrative fee on top of that for the city. And then that totals thirty-one dollars per unit. The bait, the hardship rate is twelve dollars and ninety-five cents, which is what we pay Constable, and we do not add the administrative fee to that, so it is it matches exactly what Constable has charged us. For the coming, uh what the contract allows Constable to do each year is to ask for a rate increase from the city um for an annual cost adjustment of up to five percent in any single year. But they cannot exceed a cumulative increase of fifteen percent over a four-year period. And if they're going to ask for a rate increase, they would have to request that by uh April of each year, so that we could factor that into our budget discussions for it to become effective on October one with the city's fiscal budget. They did not ask for or request a rec- uh a a rate increase for this October one. And so we will stay at the twenty-six dollar and fifty-six uh fee from Constable for the coming year for base service and the other fees um for hardship. The additional recycling carts or the additional trash carts. In looking at the next year's rates, uh the city looks to where we ended this year. This is our first year of operations, our fiscal twenty-five budget. Um in this year, we plan to end, uh hope to end with a fund balance of approximately hundred and forty-eight thousand, hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh so for next year, we are not proposing a rate increase on either the Constable side or the city's administrative fee, so it would hold at thirty-one dollars for the base service. Year two of operations will begin on October one, that'll be fiscal twenty-six. And in next year, we do expect to spend down that fund balance. Uh but we do not expect to need an additional loan from the general fund. Um the budget does not include um the solid waste fund making a loan payment to the general fund, though, for that startup loan, so the loan payment, we do not have a loan payment for next year included in the budget. Uh the proposed budget, well, I should now say the approved budget uh also does not include the solid waste management fund paying any uh percentage or type of franchise fee back to the general fund. Year three of operations, so we're looking past next year to fiscal year twenty-seven. We have modeled several great examples, possibilities, scenarios, not knowing what Constable might request yet. Um we've modeled se- several different scenarios and included uh in our modeling that we would need to consider a rate increase to balance the budget, including starting to pay back that startup loan. As well as paying, possibly paying a franchise fee to the general fund, so uh we don't, we don't know any of those variables for certain yet. Um but we're starting to look, we have looked at models for those to see uh what fiscal twenty-seven and beyond can look like. The model goes out to the end of fiscal year thirty-three, which is the last year, if you would exercise all your additional one-year option renewals with Constable, then that would be fiscal year thirty-three would be the last of of this contract. We would need to rebid and and do a new contract by um the end of fiscal thirty-three. So we will continue to monitor um for the future, but we're here tonight uh at you know, when I give you an update, we're not going to ask for rate increases here, let's stay steady at the thirty-one dollars for people. Um and be happy to answer any questions.
It's good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jesse's checking. Item eleven, appearances, the council not listed on the agenda. And it's blank, okay. Good, cause I was, somebody's gonna be sitting there a long time tonight. For the long Uh miscellaneous matters from the mayor and or city council. Would you say happy birthday to Jim? And I'd like to introduce Hesina, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Shaw.
Thank you, perfect.
Okay, um could you tell us real quick who you are? Cause we're gonna be seeing a lot of you, I guess.
Yes, yeah, um hi, my name is Hesina Shaw. I'm a new news reporter at the Orangeburg Star Journal, she started last week. Uh so I'll give these meetings, this is my first one, so Joe is actually helping me, he's typing away, there's no one typing away my notes, so I'm excited to be here, thank you so much.
University of Texas?
Yes, yeah.
All right, well, welcome. You had a long note, a lot of notes tonight. City staff updates, city manager report, city manager, Mike.
I just got a couple of things for you. Um staff met with the contractor for Lions Lake out at the site on Friday, talking about how to get started and and any alternatives now that we can see uh the lake with the water out of it, so we'll see where that conversation takes us when, just try to make sure we're being as efficient and effective as as possible. Um you received an email from me about the statutory amendment for liquor uh sales hours uh associated with FIFA World Cup. Um my intent i- is to bring that back to you once the FIFA schedule is known. Um it sounds like i- and I understand soccer, but I guess I'm not a World Cup follower necessarily, but my understanding is the the host sites will be in Canada, the United States and Mexico, so uh interested in seeing how the game schedules correspond with one, two, three in the morning, whatever that the the statutory amendment is. When we see that, I think you can have a little bit more of an informed discussion about whether you wanna opt out of that um that time change. And then a topic that came up previously that was in your budget is uh flock cameras, the fixed license plate readers, and just wanna acknowledge that 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 is a topic of conversation generally. It's kinda taken on a heightened conversation as relates to some uh na- nationwide conversation about my laws in Illinois as relates to flock cameras. And so we are staffing that through and and certainly won't just proceed on the basis of the budget. We will be bringing that item back to you so you can uh deliberate and we'll give you as much of a objective staff report as we can about kinda the issues surrounding that um before you're at, we take any action. Um there is a lot going on in the Public Works Department, but once again, I'll defer to Phil to to share that information with you and be happy to answer any questions.
Related to the um staying open twenty-four hours dur- during the FIFA World Cup, have any liquor license holders reached out in favor or with questions about that that we know of?
Not that I'm aware of. I can't say that they haven't been in contact with other staff and I, it's so early, I don't know that they're aware um just yet.
I am, as someone who, you know, I worked in the prevention world for for a while, and so that was, for me, the first concern is that it doesn't sound like a very safe or healthy option for people to be able to have access to alcohol twenty-four hours a day. I I will, we'll listen with an open uh mind, but I also have a bias towards, uh it's more important that we focus on public safety and health rather than allowing unfettered access to alcohol, so.
When if the objective is to accommodate the World Cup games, I I'm curious to see when the World Cup games are scheduled uh as a starting point of that conversation.
Thank you, Mike. City staff update, Administrative Services Department. City staff update, city clerk.
There is a report in the packet and I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Uh city staff update, community development.
Here's a report in the packet. I would highlight that um our solid waste staff will have a booth that can throw it out this week. They have a lot of um students as well as community members that attend and will want to help people if they have questions about their bulk waste or about what's offered or we we wanna be able to answer those points, so we'll be out there. If you attend, that you stop by and say hi.
Tell me what you're having, I missed the first sentence.
The solid waste staff will have a booth that get the red out.
Oh.
So we're hoping to message some to the community, you know, residents as well as the community members that attend, um who, I'm sure they know their op day by now, but if they're confused on the bulk waste days or uh what they can do for yard waste, cause leaf season is coming, and we wanna be able to help them and answer those questions.
Perfect, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City staff updates, fire department, August activity report.
Maybe in, uh the report is in the packet, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Uh we did, in August, we did have nine fires, so one was more significant than you might have seen uh over by the country club. But uh was a a busy month and we haven't really slowed down yet this month. You could definitely tell it was a full moon this last weekend, so. Uh a couple of other additions, we'll get get the red out this week uh on campus. Uh they'll have a fireworks show after the football game. Um so uh they're having, uh their site approval will be through the Division of Fire Safety, so they'll be down Thursday. They requested that we come along uh with them, and then we'll have a truck there, just with, dry as it is, hopefully we get a little rain tomorrow, but we will be there. Also, this year, uh the university's public safety has expanded some other security measures at the stadium and has put together uh a unified command operation and put some resources there, so if you're at the game uh Thursday night, you'll see uh fire department members there um in the the main concourse, uh providing some additional aid if it's needed, so a little change this year, but.
You showed a little what happens. Rain. What's that?
Lots of it in Kansas.
Yeah, to do, do a little dance. It looked okay-ish chances tomorrow, but.
We'll see.
City staff update, Parks and Recreation Department, Chris. City staff update, Police Department. Chief Musterman.
Mayor, City Council, I'll try and keep it short. Uh real quick, uh we're at training down at uh Lake of the Ozarks last week, myself and Major Filler. Um learned a lot down there. Um while we were gone on Thursday, we uh did did a joint operation with county highway patrol. I'm sure a lot of you saw it on Facebook, um thirty-one, I believe, uh warrant arrests out of over a hundred uh packets that they had out, looking for individuals. And then uh Mike brought up flock, I'll just touch on it briefly. Um we're trying to be as open and transparent about that uh system as we can, give you the information that you need to make that uh determination. Um I'll throw in there things that uh I've been thinking about and wrapping my head around uh, that system's around nationwide. It's been in the use, uh L P R's been in use many, many, many years. Uh we worked uh quite a few homicide, or a few homicides back in the day, and uh approximately ten years ago, I believe, we used that uh O five seventy to help solve a, solve a homicide or give us information on it. Um with that, also, when you're driving down toll roads, how do you think you get those tickets mailed to you, right? So those cameras and that stuff's all connection line, so cameras are out in the public, uh help us for the investigation, so that's some of the information I have on that, so, all right?
City staff update, Public Works Department.
Even mayor, city councilman. So, as Mike mentioned, there's a lot going on. We have the street building overlay program started, lots of streets that are going to be touched. And the crew's working really well. In fact, I don't know if you've been to Larkin Court, they And the crew's working really well. In fact, I don't know if you've been to Larkin Court, they've started milling in that area. They finished that road today with the overlay. It looks good. Um, we've got sidewalk programs started also over on Warren and that area. You'll see lots of sidewalk going in. Lots of stuff with Maguire is happening. Lots of curb sidewalk. The fifteenth of September is, we're going to start digging up the street abroad. You have the map in front of you. Where it shows where we're starting and we're gonna work that section. And as we get that section done, then we're gonna start north on the next section and have that section closed for a period of time. On the map, it shows that the access points, crossroads will be open until they get to that spot and they'll be doing work off hours. To dig that spot up, fix it so that the least amount of uh accessibility or. Where they will be accessible the most amount. Um, so lots of stuff's going on there. The railroad bridge will also be. Um, touched on the fifteenth. I let you all approve that order, the change order. On the fifteenth of September, it'll be out there, they'll mill it and then overlay it. So that's gonna be a nice addition. The plant expansion. The big hole at the east plants there, they're working on the. Ironwork, getting the forming set up for all that. They've got another big hole. Mike and I took a tour last week of all the stuff going on out there. Uh, it's coming along. Did hear today that they hurt some unfavorable dirt, so. Just fill that in with more favorable dirt and figure that out. If you all have any major questions, Peyton from Burns McDonald's is here for wire work.
Sidewalk.
The sidewalks. The ADA ramps.
No, the the gaps and Joe's recent in- information he gave today.
So today there was uh, so the. There at the corners of Grover, Gay and North Street, the. Uh, signal poles, the company that's coming in and putting those up, they created holes. We will be filling those in with temporary cold patch. Because there are holes, there are gaps, so we're gonna be working on that first thing tomorrow. Yeah. There's been some other minor issues that have come up that we're taking care of.
Yes, we just uh, we inventoried the sidewalks and sidewalk gaps and and are identifying kind of a temporary solution in the short run.
Um, there was a couple of comments made on social media about uh handicap wheelchair and with the way that the. The street sidewalks are torn up, it forced someone out into the street, into into the traffic. And I was wondering if we could. You know, they have no other place to go. Could they call nine-one-one or and have police come and turn their lights on while they get across the street? There has to be a safe way. For people to be able to get across. With that, I don't, I wouldn't think that the contractors that are out there working can stop. You know, and try and stop traffic. That's not safe. It's not safe for the person that's um. Handicapped and unable to get across the street and that is their only way to get to where they need to be to try and navigate that on their own. So I don't know, I don't know the solution.
So the the in- the inventory that we deal with, for starters, the expectation of the contractors has been communicated from the outset that the sidewalks need to be traversable. If you remember, there there were sections that had cold patch asphalt down as kind of a temporary approach. Um, and then the inventory that we did today, kind of double checking, uh, was looking at. Can you get from north to south or vice versa? May require, you know, it may not be a direct route. It may be you meet meet the end of the sidewalk, you need to cross the street, work your way down the block and cross back over. But then for those remaining gaps, we're working with the contractors to try to put in a temporary.
That's the the fill in the hole.
The fill in holes, so that it is traversable still.
And with all the work that's going on, that that doesn't mean that at any point in time, there won't be work happening. Um, but I don't. We're doing our best to respond to that, but I don't know that we'll be able to anticipate it all.
Yeah. The other thing that I've noticed is in this, I don't think it has anything to do with Maguire. I think it's the water company replacing all those water lines and they totally shut off um our north and south streets. And we only, we don't have Maguire and we've already moved people to College and Washington and other, and then they've come in and totally shut it, totally shut it off where you can't even get. Through and there's no warning. There's no warning at all. It's just, you turn the corner and now you can't, you have to figure out where to go. So we, and it's not just one spot, it's numerous spots. So I think it's, I I I feel the frustration of the public. Because I've had to, you know, do a lot of. Digging and zagging to get where I want to go. And when you're not expecting it, you, we expect it over on Maguire, but we're not expecting this. And they they, once they're done and they fill it with gravel, they could do a little bit of job filling it even with gravel. That would help.
So I have a meeting with uh American Water, um, American Missouri Water, Missouri American Water uh next Friday. That really just kind of a get acquainted and to learn more about their scheduling and what we can do to coordinate more. But I completely acknowledge the frustration and the amount of work that's going on. Uh, the flip side of that is it is a lot of progress. There's a lot going on in the community right now and everyone's patience is appreciated. I had. Memorial Day of next year, I I hope we can look back and say, wow, look at, look at it.
There have, I agree with your project up here. It's been frustrating that. Name is a shutdown. We did require them to open up Washington this last weekend and we will require it again in the future. But the sooner they get that done, the better. In fact, I think they're almost done with it. There are some other projects that we have pushed them off. So that they have not shut down other major roads, so. It's. I'm very thankful that Mike is going to be getting more with American Water leaderships and hopefully in the future. We will get more of a relationship where we can communicate and set up.
We, we could help them communicate it along with our uh rethink Maguire communications about what's gonna be closed because of. Wire street work, but also be aware that the water company is also working in this area. So people aren't so caught off guard. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, so Peyton's our onsite guy, Burns and. Well, Peyton, all right.
There was a spoke of the number spriggy guy.
Okay, that's the guy. All right.
All right.
So we're still coordinating with the university about football games and parents. We are, are great.
We've got all those dates and so.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes. City staff updates. There's conventions, rural Marcy, you have something.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I want to wear my Arts Commission liaison hat. Uh, I hope you are able to see on the um Arts Commission Facebook page that the bench has been received. Um, it was created from the mulberry tree from the rethink Maguire project and it is safely and secure. And it's a city facility until its home is determined, but it's beautiful. Um, and can't wait to see it out and about. Speaking of being out and about, and I can promise, uh, you will have a good time at this Saturday at the community center you're gonna go to Eat Your Art Out. And it's from three-thirty to five-thirty. There's no cost for admission, but there will be some silent auction. You can bid on some of the creations. And they will have UCM alum Mike Elder. He's a cake sculptress and a licensed pilot too. Um, and he's gonna be doing his craft while you're there. So he's gonna be creating a cake while the audience interacts with him. So it's gonna be a really cool event. I hope every one of you can attend. Um, please tell your friends and neighbors. They've done a lot of work to build this event. Um, and hope that the community center B and C, I believe the rooms are, are completely full on the Saturday. Thank you. By three-thirty to five-thirty?
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you go to the Warrensburg Arts Commission, you can find out all the details.
Thanks, Marcy. We're moving into closed session, so thank you. Safe travel.
Oh, we need a motion. Mayor. You need to breathe down.
Close session, motion to close part of this meeting pursuant to section six-ten dash oh twenty point zero-two-one of the revised statute of Missouri relating to thirteen. Individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Thank you.
I need a motion.
I so moved.
Yep.
Uh, Kushner?
Yes.
Uh, for.
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
I make a motion we book.